This meeting is being recorded. Thank you, Council Clerk. Councilman Ferguson, would you do the allocation, please?
Father, we thank you. We give you the glory and we give you the honor. We just magnify your name. I'm just asking for your strength. Father God, you love your perception. We just ask for Jesus that you be in the midst of this meeting. Father God, we just honor you, Lord Jesus, for your peace. That's the best all understanding. And Father God, I just ask that you will give us wisdom and knowledge and understanding even as we go over the budget on tonight. Bless those that are participants. Bless our citizens, employees, and all that are on this call. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Madam Clerk, do the roll call, please.
Councilwoman Jones? Councilwoman Harry? Councilwoman Hairston?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Guillaume?
Here.
Councilwoman Fareed?
Here.
Council, Vice President Ferguson?
Yeah.
President Curtis?
Here.
We, Councilwoman Harry?
Not being attendance today.
All right, we have six in attendance.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Send over.
Second.
Any discussion? I will just say that all the pieces of the budget are here. I know we're not going to get through all of this tonight. That was not the intent. I just don't know how fast we can get through each bullet point. So we can either go in order or if someone has, you know, a different place they want to start, it's fine, but we can go. And then we could evaluate in the next couple of hours whether it's a good stopping point to pick it up at another session. So please don't get, look at this list and get overwhelmed because we will not get through all of this unless we're superhuman tonight. All right, any other discussion before we vote to adopt this agenda? All right, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hairston?
Yes.
Councilwoman Guillaume?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Fareed?
Yes.
Vice President Ferguson?
Yes.
President Curtis?
Yes.
We have six. This is passed.
All right. All right. Going to switch it up a little bit and move capital projects all the way down to the bottom and start it general operations. And this, Council Clerk, if you could take good notes on this, that'll be helpful. And I'm trying to pull up the budget in Excel. If I can. So that everybody can see it. Just give me one second.
I want to order Council President. Would you give the page number for the general operations? So that the citizens will know what page we're beginning on.
General Operations. I have to scroll all the way back up. General Fund. Actually. Actually, as to not confuse the public, we can go in order of what they have received. In order of they receive is administration first. Anybody that disagrees with going in that order? Okay, so we'll actually start as to not have people flip up and down in their in their PDF. We'll start with the top. And at the top, we're just going to break it down by each individual section. And the first section is administration, which is on page sixteen. Okay. And I'll share my screen so everybody can see. Sure. Okay. Can everybody see my screen? Is it too small?
Yes, Council President, sorry. Thank you.
All right. As people may recall, that in the original budget that the citizens have, this was incorrectly stated, I believe. It was in here as one hundred and sixty-five thousand. As it shows, I'm sorry, one hundred and sixty-three as it shows right here, and that has been removed. So this is based on what they, what has already been adjusted by the Treasurer's Office. And so with that, are there any comments, revisions? People have with the administration budget?
Council President? I see another line item this change. The administrative assistant on the packet that was available for the citizens, it said forty-five, one, three, nine, but I see a different amount here. Can we explain that, please?
Mister Stewart, are you on the line? Or Miss Bobber?
Yes, I'm on the line.
Okay.
Okay, so this is due to the fact that this position will be hiring or this will be hiring a new position that will start at forty-one thousand. Previously, we had an administrative assistant who was transferred to the Police Department. So we now have to find new hire, which will start at forty-one thousand.
Okay, and on the next line, that's changed as well. It said fifty-three, five, sixty for the webmaster, and now it shows fifty-five, one, sixty-seven on the screen.
On the the PDF section, the three percent was not taken over or was not calculated when bringing forward to the twenty-twenty-three. So the fifty-five thousand is the addition of the three percent increase.
Okay.
And the next line is slightly different, but there's a difference. The next line is twenty-five, five, seventy in the packet, but here it's twenty-five, five, sixty-four.
Mister Stewart?
No, I couldn't tell where that six dollar difference came about. Wait, let me see. How much is it? It's a six dollar difference? No. Hold on a second. No, this should definitely be twenty-five, five, seventy.
Is it a?
If we add the, the three percent.
What? It's, it's here. In the, here's the formula.
Yes.
And the cola is there. I mean, it's six dollars, but.
Yeah, it's not so much the materiality of it, but just trying to understand where these differences are coming from. Because the packet that I'm looking at, these numbers are all different than what you're showing on the screen. So I'm imagining the citizens are also seeing this difference. Like the total here is on the printout is four, 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 oh, two, oh, and here it's three, eight, 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 four, nine. And that's not all due to the discrepancy with the city manager salary.
No.
So if I could just jump in with, and Mister Stewart, you can corroborate me if I'm incorrect. But the differences with the benefits is going to be all those numbers, particularly the Social Security Medicare tax. Probably is going to be a little bit different because of the error.
That is true. Because those numbers are tied to the corrections that were taken.
Okay, I got it. So because the, those benefit amounts were based off of the incorrect salary, those amounts are adjusted now. Okay, got it.
Okay. Let me just check one thing. Sorry. Did it change the bottom number? I'm sorry, I'll just go back. Any other questions as it relates to the administrative budget?
Yes, one more question. On the election board expenses, I was wondering why we have a budget of twenty thousand dollars? There's no election. And it looks like in previous years where there is no election, the amount is zero. So I don't know what was thinking there.
Yeah.
For this, for this, I would refer to Mayor Cross. Maybe she could explain the reason why we decided to put an amount there.
Mayor Cross, are you there?
Yes, thank you, Council President, and thank you, Mister Stewart. So for the Board of Elections, while we have an ability to pass our resolutions, some of our resolutions actually have, unless there is a citizen request for that resolution to actually come to a vote. So we put an amount against it just in case we have to formulate the Board of Elections. That amount is just a placeholder, which carries us in case something like that happens. It is just really money that may not be utilized, but because we have the ability to run an election, if there is a recall, then we need to have a Board of Election ready. That prepares us and keeps us, it's kind of like insurance, right? So it's, it's stuff that we put in there. Hopefully, we won't need it until twenty-twenty-five.
Okay, so let me clarify, let me make sure I'm understanding. Are you talking about the fact that citizens have the right to petition to referendum? Any actions that we make and that so you're putting some money aside for that?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Jones?
Okay, so for that, you don't need an election board. They have to get a petition together. And then the petition is presented to the council where they do a vote. It doesn't, it's not where you do a formal election or anything. If it's going to be something for referendum, the referendum will come up when they have an election again. So I think that twenty thousand dollars should come out of there because we're not going to have an election anytime until twenty-twenty-five. Also, it would be a whole lot easier. Okay. Mister Stewart, can you tell me how much was spent for line ten, 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 seventy-four, fifty, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, seventy-six, fifty for the administration and MML Legislative Meeting City Manager for the City Manager and Professional Training and whatever else is in the details for this, the top line. There, thank you. How much money was spent? So far? Do we, do we have that information?
What I have is the report for April. So in April, we could see how much was actually spent.
Thank you.
Could I ask for a minute? Give me one minute. So far, for training, there was one thousand seven hundred and fifty-four dollars of the four thousand from previous.
The three thousand approved for FY twenty-two?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm sorry, what was that number again? Seven thousand or is that in here?
The amount that was spent through through April was one thousand seven hundred and fifty-four. But please take in mind that the we had these programs in June here. And I don't have that information with me right now.
Okay.
You don't have the information for the mileage reimbursements or the part DM?
So, so it would have been an additional, I think it was two oh seven, I think it was. Addition to this for each individual. So we had two oh seven for how many six? It was five of you, right?
No, this is, this is for this, the administration.
For the.
This is just for the city manager.
Right, for her, it's just an additional two hundred and three. So we're looking at one thousand nine hundred and fifty-seven.
Okay, and that was just for MML.
And that's for the MML. That was.
So. Okay, so they're proposing three thousand for the coming fiscal year.
Yeah.
Okay, so now. Okay, so now we'll move down to special events. What, what usually we have an indication of what kind of events go into the special events box so that we won't be spending money for things that are not budgeted for? Like in, in the, in, in the, excuse me, for the council, we like in our special events, we'll have something like Glenn Arden Day or the Christmas Party. There's not, there's community-wide events. What kind of events are we talking about?
I can try to answer that if the Treasurer will allow me to do so.
Yes, please.
I'm sorry, I turned my camera on. Apologize. And that would include events like the MLK Day, Black History Month, Veterans Day, then Memorial Day.
Okay, but those events need to be inserted in the MLK Day, Black History.
Veterans and Memorial Day.
Memorial Day, okay. And let's see how much we're community-wide events. So they're proposing ten thousand?
No, we're proposing five thousand.
Pardon? Five thousand?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, and I would like to know how much was spent on those events for the last last time, but I know Mister Stewart probably doesn't have all of that information with him today. Consulting, let me.
I have a question as relates to this, Miss Jones, if you could let me piggyback off of you. Why the five thousand? Because in nineteen and twenty, they're around, you know, nineteen was, let's say ninety-five hundred and twenty was eleven thousand, eight hundred dollars. So why do we decrease it to five?
Well, that was the reason why I asked for the figures from the, from what was spent in twenty-two.
Okay.
So we can see what the difference is or what the difference was. I mean, they should have a budget for the events that they do.
Okay.
So in twenty-twenty-one, as you can see, there was one thousand six thirty-nine was spent. They didn't have that much because I think because of the COVID
Right.
situation, they didn't have much. But when I look at twenty-twenty, there's eleven thousand, eight, seventy-four. I don't know some of the projects that were done for special events during that time. But the COVID actually started in early twenty-twenty, right?
Correct.
So what we're looking at is those events that started from July first, twenty-nineteen through to when COVID started in, or the lockdown started in March twenty-twenty. So there may have been so much more events going on the earliest part of the fiscal year.
Okay.
So this year, I've, we would still be a bit conservative here. And I see on our schedule here, we have Glenn Arden Day as well. So.
Glenn Arden Day is under the legislative.
It should be under the legislative.
It's not under the, it shouldn't be under the administration.
Council President, if I may?
I'm Mayor Cross.
Okay, we have a confusion there. Actually, the special events is more like PP and E distribution for the administration. Things like community service projects. If we wanted to bring in a communicator to educate our population about the ARPA funds, if they required funding for that, if we wanted to bring special programs. So not the MLK Day, all of that is under the Executive Office. That's in that special events line. So we're getting confused. Glenn Arden Day, as you stated, Councilwoman Jones, is under the legislative branch. So just for clarity, those special events you see there are special events that the administrative staff needs to inform the citizens. If we needed to bring in a special guest speaker to speak about changes in legislation on Capitol Hill, for example, then if that person required a stipend, that would be something that would hit the administrative special events fund. Those are for edification of the populous body. The PP and E distribution is a prime example to buy the PP and E and distribute the PP and E. If we needed to get new code books, we are talking about modifying our code. So the city codes would need to be printed, bounded, and it would cover, you know, someone coming in and actually launching communication on that respect. It can even, if you're doing a rewrite of the charter and you want the city attorney or the attorney that Councilwoman Fareed had mentioned on the last meeting, then that could be used to offset the cost because I know you only have thirty events that she will support the, you know, the rewrite of our charter. But if we wanted to have a charter meeting with our citizens, then that's something that we could bring forward under the administrative budget of special events. So that's more what that line item is for.
And let me, let me clarify this with that, as far as bringing somebody in for a speaker for, to talk about issues on Capitol Hill. Congressman Anthony Brown has never had an issue in all the years that he's been in Congress coming to the city of Glenn Arden for free to have a meeting. All we would have to do or all we did was provide the goal room. And at ten o'clock, he would bring in any citizen that had wanted to come in district, and he would tell us what was going on on Capitol Hill. So we don't have to pay someone a stipend to do that. We can, our representatives are paid by us through our taxes, and they, they, they can come in and work for us. And we don't have to give them additional monies to have them to come in and do a presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jones. Councilwoman Fareed?
Yes, I have a question, just going back to the budget for special events and getting an understanding from Councilwoman Jones. Councilwoman Jones, are you saying that when there are budget, a budget line item for special events, that you can only have the events that are specified in that line item? If, if so, I just would question that because we're doing this budget ahead of the year. So if you had anticipated having an event and you're not having it, I'm not, I guess I would wonder why that money wouldn't be able to be used for other events under the category of the types of events that are supposed to be for that line item. I'm just worried with the idea that you have to specify every event that you're going to have from now until the end of next fiscal year in the budget line item.
The budget is passed by ordinance. It's almost, not almost, it is the law for the city of Glenn Arden as to how we're going to distribute and use the monies that we have. And it is given to the citizens. In the past, when we've looked at the budget, this is, and I think that this is the, the protocol for the budget, is if you have an, whatever's in that budget is what you're going to spend the money for. It's not what you just come up with and say, this is what I'm going to do. So whatever your events are that you're planning on having, then they need to be prepared when the budget is prepared so that they can specify in that line item, this is what we're going to do with the money. That's why I always had a problem with these events that are being brought in and they're not specified in the budget that we pass by ordinance. Our law that says this is how we're going to spend the monies of the city of Glenn Arden. It's been agreed on by the council. It's been, the, the public has been notified that this is what we're going to do.
Right, and I guess I, I get that from the perspective of the fact that that's money that's supposed to be spent for events, right? So it shouldn't then be spent for telephone bills. So it shouldn't then be spent for telephone bills. But in the same regard, like for a line item for supplies, we don't list out every single supply that we're going to get. It's understood that. Supplies can cover paper, toner, etc. So I would think.
I'm sorry, no, 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 if you, if we could just. Miss Faree, if you just finish your point, and then we go back to Ms. Jones to respond. So it's not just a back and forth. Miss Faree?
Yeah, so I'm wondering about the level of itemization expected for that. As opposed to activities that fall under the scope of, you know, events, as opposed to like saying toy drive or something so specific.
Councilman Jones.
Okay, so if you look at the line item for office supplies and for HR supplies, they have letterhead envelopes, materials for brochures, ink, toner, and copier paper. Folders, ink, toner, in in each. In each department where they have whatever it is that they're they they have a specific what it's going to be used for. I mean. Paper clips is minute. I mean, you know, you're going to have or need, and it should be some already around. You know, you may not have to mention that, but it says office supplies, HR supplies, and they're meaning what they're saying in the in the line item. And it's always, you know, when we've done the budget, they specifically, I'm sorry, they specifically. Identify what the events were as if you, when we look at the legislative budget for their events, you'll see. It says Glenn Arden Day, Christmas Party. It gives you the events. This budget is only for a year. So if you come up with a new event next year, then be ready when the budget comes around, and so it can be put in the budget so that. We'll we'll be able to specifically say this is what the money was spent on.
Mayor Cross.
Thank you, Council President Curtis. So another way to look at it, and thank you, Councilwoman Fareed, for the clarification that you brought forward. Is, as we recall, when we had the ARPA funds, we needed to have the citizens' comments. While we put it online, one of the tough decisions that we had to make is that the citizens really needed this feedback to go door to door. In order for that to go door to door, this is something where that would be a special event, right? So if we have advancements, if we want to make. People aware of the grand opening of the Seventh Street Park, for example. These are ways that the special events monies can be used. The administration can take that forward. The opening of the Seventh Street Park should be a fanfare because it haven't had. Any playground equipment there for years. So that's something that you want to make sure that as a population, our citizen knows. That that's happening. That can be in the special events, for example. Notifications to citizens and social media strategies. Polls is a big one because we've not done polls before. The administration budget can utilize that for engaging and obtaining citizen data and feedback for their involvement. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I I think, and Michelle's correct or wrong, I I don't disagree with what you're saying, I may across. I think those are. Like with the open of Seventh Street Park, there needs to be some type of, you know, communication and things like that. I I think what she was getting to is just putting those in here so we know what it is, instead of just saying community wide events and citizen. Feedback forms. Now, while I agree, I wouldn't necessarily list out, I mean, I'm happy to list out letterhead envelope, stuff like that. But I think to Ms. Jones's point, I mean, I've. Never known a budget where you just say, let's give me five thousand here, give me ten thousand here, give me twenty thousand there. Like, there is a plan. You plan out your next year, whatever it is you want to do. And then you put numbers to those events. And so it'll be just be great. Treasurer and Mayor, Ms. Barber, if you just outline. What you intend to use it instead of just having this broad description. I I think that's what this Jones was getting to. And again, Michelle's correct or wrong, but Councilwoman Gill. I'm sorry, Ms. Ferguson, I'll come to you next.
So just staying on this for a second, I kind, so I I do see the the relevance of. Calling out certain things like, okay, how did we get to this five thousand, five thousand dollar number? You know, we plan on doing this event, that event, this event, that event. So I completely understand that. I think, and I don't want to speak for Ms. Fareed, if if this is not what she was saying, but I I tend to see. Where she was coming from in regards to. We can list those, well, not we, but the administration can list those things out there, but I would hope that we don't. Hold them, hold their feet to the fire if a particular event, like let's say, this is a fictitious event here, but let's say there was an event that was supposed to be held. On Christmas Eve, and you know, it's listed over here, Christmas Eve event or whatever. And then because of the weather, month, whatever happened, that event was canceled, and we just couldn't do it. But then. Here's an opportunity to do a New Year's Day event that's different from what was listed. I would hope that. Because it's not listed in here as New Year's Day, that that event can't be done. So I I think that's where. I I don't know if that's what Ms. What what Councilwoman Fareed was saying, but at least for me, I do think that you need to. Obviously spell out like, okay, how did you get to this five thousand dollar, you know, doing this, doing that, doing this, doing that. But as long as. At the end of this calendar year, the the next year that, well, twenty twenty-three, when when we have to do a new budget and and close the. The budget that we're going to be voting on this year, as long as that line item is met. Via special events, then I don't see. Like us holding, you know, people's feet to the fire. So that's one. I also want to say that I do echo. What Councilwoman Jones stated about the vote, the twenty thousand dollars, we don't have to scroll down again, but that twenty thousand dollar line item. In regards to recall, I don't think that's necessary to be put in there. It's something completely different than what was explained as to why it's there. So I just want to. Make sure that we flag that. I don't know how we're going to be doing this later on if we're going to be circling back. But I just want to say that I do agree that I don't think that twenty K needs to be there. Thank you.
Thank you. Hundred percent agree, Councilwoman Gill. Thank you. All right. Councilman Ferguson.
Okay, um. Yeah, with the twenty thousand, I think that needs to come out. It's not necessary. And the five thousand dollars of the special events, a lot of those things that were mentioned. Even with polls and sending out information on openings. Monies have been. Categorized for that outside of being in the special events. Also. As Ms. Jones said, Councilwoman Jones said, if there's anything rulings and things like that coming up up the hill. Brown has come, said it's the best second come, we 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 can give them what they have, it's what we call town hall. So we don't need to. Put any funds in 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 there for that. And I really. You know, I think we need to be cautious about. Placeholding with dollars because some of this stuff that has been explained is is not even relevant. So the twenty thousand need to come out, and that five thousand dollars either need to be explained or reduced or even taken out.
All right. Problem with my computer here, so I'll just do it in here.
One other thing I wanted to say, as far as the events, like Councilwoman Jones said, we only. I'll list them, but just like we didn't do a Christmas party, is in that that line item. Because we didn't do that and use that, that doesn't mean that we can't use it for another event, but it's within that. You know, just like. Other Councilwoman said, if we don't use that, that don't mean that we use or lose because the money is still there. But as much as you know, we need to put. Put the. Events in there. Listen, so that we know what we are allocating that money to. Instead of just popping up, pop up events. Two weeks in advance or something like that. But again. If we have the money in there, we do not use it for a particular event like which we have done. We didn't do any. Hill cities, we didn't do a Christmas party, but we have money in there so we could use it for something else for the citizens. Strictly for the citizens because that's their taxpayer money, but we can use that. But. We're not going to another line item. To do events.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Ferguson. Councilwoman Faree?
Yes, I hadn't responded before, but what Councilwoman Gill explained and what Council. Vice President Ferguson just said is exactly what I mean. I don't intend to say that we shouldn't have any idea of what we're going to do. I just don't want us to be held to. You know, the fact that there's a potential different event that we want to do, or, you know, something got canceled and now we can't do it just because it's not a specified item. On the line item, especially if it is clearly falling within the category, right, like a special event, just like a a buying of ten would fall within office supplies, even if it's not specified.
Yeah. Thank you, Councilwoman Faree. Any other comments on administrative budget? Got rid of the twenty thousand dollars for the election board. And the the treasurer will get back with Ms. Jones on the actuals for conference training. And special events. I'm sorry. Oh, thank you, Councilwoman Ferguson.
Okay, so that is HR, Human Resources Conference and Training.
I'm sorry, what line is that?
Forty.
Okay.
Okay, was one thousand dollars? And I see MML there, so is that is that enough in the budget for for the MML?
Mayor, Ms. Barber, Mr. Stewart.
I do talk with, and Ms. Schultz is on the line. I don't think that would be enough if she were to attend MML.
And do you put the full cost, like hotel costs? Per diem? Okay.
It would not be enough if, especially if I used it for not the SHRM conference, but the SHRM renewal. Because that's about two eighty a year.
But you don't have, that would be a membership, that. Would that be a membership online?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So do you think this should be increased?
Anybody disagree with the fifteen hundred dollar adjustment to be able to cover. SHRM Conference, MML, and employee training, the seminars? Okay. No disagreement. Hopefully, that'll be enough, Ms. Schultz.
I'll make it work.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Forty-six, okay, so it's professional services lobbyists. Twenty-four thousand.
Take it as for the, I may correct if I'm wrong, that was initially, I guess, for the. Oh, goodness, the name just slipped off my tongue. Who said that they weren't interested anymore or removed their name from the running?
GS Proctor, sir.
GS Proctor, yes.
But we still need to, we still need to hold that council president for. Whatever lobbyists that we get, we don't know what the new figure will be. We've put requests out. There hasn't been any takers on the new bid, sir. But eventually, the expectations that we would get a lobbyist to support the city.
Ms. Ferguson, was there anything else?
Okay, the next professional services, engineering?
Yes, ma'am.
What is that?
So the engineering, the engineering services would be for things that we would need to have engineers do. One of the things that. We currently use an engineer for is, since the Woodmore Town Center, roads have not been turned over to us yet. There were some issues with regards to DR Horton and the roads, and so we did have to have the engineers. Go out and take a look at those roads. So those services that we provide. That we ask them to do, that's what pays for that. We do anticipate with the playgrounds that. There with particularly with the Seventh Street Playground, that there would be some architectural and engineering that would be needed, like for a site plan for that. Particular park and some other projects that might come up. So that's what that thirty-two thousand dollars is. Again. We don't know exactly what those projects would be. Those are two of the projects that. Are top of mind right now, but that is similar to the legal fees that we have for the attorney. We never know exactly how much it's going to be, but we do put in a placeholder there for those type of services, should they arrive.
Okay, thank you. I'm finished.
Ms. Barber, just one more thing, that does that include, I know we talked earlier about the. The.
Council chambers.
Chambers, yeah.
Yes, it would include something like that as well.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Jones?
But we did pass a resolution with using ARPA funds for engineering services also. I just don't want to overload one. Engineering services with ARPA funds, and you got engineering services in the budget. Just a thought.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jones. Any other questions for? Or edits for the administrative budget? All right. Then, I believe next is up. Is.
Point of order, Council President. So with the changes that you're making, the changes online, and this usually what happens is that. Treasurer makes the changes, and then by the next meeting or whatever, he present, he'll have that, that we shouldn't have to go back to the administration. Except the information that he's going to present to me. I'm not going to mess, I don't think I'm going to mess with the. Proposed amount of three thousand dollars for council conferences and training. But so you're going to make these changes online and then. He'll find like the twenty thou, the additional twenty thousand dollars will be used to help balance the budget. That that we're having. So you're just making these changes online, and this is going to be it, or do we have to wait for the treasurer? I'm sure he's, you know.
Yes, so what will happen is when I get these numbers from what we're doing now, I will do an immediate change. To the complete budget and rerun that budget again.
Okay.
Especially for these sections that we have completed.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, you know, have a guidelines of what we're, how we're doing this.
Yes, so as we, yeah, so as we move along, as there are changes, I will make those changes. Circle back with the. The Council President, just to make sure that we are covered, and then we move forward. So to the next meeting. These would have been amended or corrected.
Updated, okay.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, yeah, and and I'll share this file with the treasurer, just so he'll, you know, can can mirror. Compared to what he's doing and make sure we've covered. So I've added column T, which is the notes. You know, of what we're doing, but this is just for internal purposes, but don't mind sharing it with the treasurer.
All right, sir, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up is the legal, which should be pretty brief. Any questions on the legal? All the council members should have gotten the email earlier about the city attorney. Any questions on the legal? Uh, all the council members should have gotten the email earlier about, um, the city attorney. But FY twenty three, uh, the proposal is sixty thousand dollars. Any questions, concerns? Okay. Moving on.
Uh, no, I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed your hand. Councilwoman Jones?
Uh, how much have we spent? Do we now have a, have a estimate? Mr. Stewart? Or would you rather provide that information at a later time?
So through, um, through
April.
April, um, twenty seven thousand.
Okay.
Or one was spent. Um, I got a bill from them recently for, I think it was four thousand, and I think we're going to get a bill for April, for, for June. So I'm looking at another, another eight thousand, nine thousand. So it would have been like thirty six thousand would be spent.
Okay, so, um, and we, with the person that's probably coming on board, we don't know what their rates are going to be, so. Uh, I, okay, I guess we can stick with sixty thousand if the rest of the council agrees. I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I agree. Anyone disagrees? Okay. Uh, and we can circle, you know, with, um, the potential attorney next week, just get an idea of what that particular attorney's rates are and if need to make any adjustments and can make adjustments. All right, any other questions, concerns on the legal? Budget. All right. Uh, next in the, um, packet by the citizens is uh, the cable department. Eagle. Cable Department, yep. Okay. Any questions, concerns here? Edits. Let me increase this, sorry. I thought I increased it, they gotta deal with everyone. Uh, I'm sorry, I missed your hand. Uh, Ms. Ferguson?
So is it saying that the, um, the cost for this service is increasing by fifty four thousand dollars?
Correct.
Why?
Cross, city manager?
I mean, the, uh, nineteen, twenty, twenty one, twenty two, the highest is twenty five thousand now, and, and, um, twenty three is talking about seventy nine thousand, eight thousand dollars. Why?
Yeah, documentation. So the company that we were going with, Steel Beach Post Production, uh, which is what we've submitted for resolution. Uh, this company would be, um, a little bit more, um, on the side of the cable room, uh, as it pertains to that increase. Uh, we would be looking at the overall cable room operations for those professional services. Remember, that company charges us literally about an hour. Um, we, you know, put out a request for proposal for that and only got back the, the three bids. One wasn't, um, suitable, and the other one withdrew their bid. So that left us with the Steel Beach Post Production. So these, this proposed budget incorporates those changes in costs as it pertains to that company.
Was there a, uh, a rough estimate based on the, uh, the numbers provided by the company to, to come up with this figure? Like, how was this figure? How'd you come about? This figure?
Uh, yes, sir, it's in the request for proposal. I'm trying to pull it up now, unless you have it handy there, Ms. Barber.
No, I apologize, I do not have it.
So what we have here is in the notes for the supplement to saying that monthly installment of cable TV manager contract service um, will definitely bring this amount up. We are having a support council meeting. These are the costs that are associated with those meetings. It's like three fifty per meeting. Um, the city events and mayoral forum, like town hall broadcasting and recordings is like four fifty per event. Then we have public broadcasting media. Um, this is saying one thirty six per month. Um, social media platform. We, we take all of those costs into account when we were putting this together. So if you look, so if you look in the supplement that I sent you, you would see the notes telling you how we came up to these numbers. And, um, and it's mainly because we need to get the cable department functioning as it should. Over the years, it has not been functioning. We need to inject some new capital, some new resources into this department to have it broadcast and do the work. That is necessary.
And, and also let me just add to that, not the mayorial forums, those are on Zoom. Rather, it would be the council meetings, uh, that are required by the charter. Uh, that was just a point of correction, but the communication specialist that you see uh, in the professional services, we are, we're needing to hire someone to actually do our language translation. And we are also looking into sign language, uh, part of the communications uh, line item for professional services because we are growing as a community. And we do have a population of hearing impaired, which we haven't been servicing, uh, because we do not have sign language for our uh, meetings. So, uh, the Spanish translation, uh, currently, we have been taking that from out of our population, our body. But that really, um, really isn't fair to that person because we've been using their skill sets literally for free. Uh, so that is put in as a communication specialist. So that's really the increase in the cost that you see there. Uh, communication specialists for language to ensure that we are inclusive with our population, our Spanish speaking population that's growing uh, as well as, um, sign language. And that is appropriate for our communication for, uh, city council meetings in accordance with the charter.
Thank you, Mayor Cross. Uh, Councilwoman Gill?
Thank you, Council President. Did we, um, do we have an idea, or unless this was provided by the treasurer, what the amount in mind was for the communication specialist?
So originally, we had put in there twenty five thousand for both of those. Um, we need to, uh, speak with Ms. Monet Ward, uh, to see what her final numbers were. But that should cover both of those translations, and that covers us for the entire year.
Okay. Thank you, yeah. Council President, were you saying something? I, I apologize.
No, I didn't know if Mayor Cross was asking Ms. Ward a question to support your, your, uh, to answer your question. So I was going to call Ms. Ward to give you the answer to what you're.
Yeah, and I can't see it. I'm just looking at your screen, liter- literally in the speaker, so I apologize. I didn't see that.
No worries. Ms. Ward, did you have a answer to Councilwoman Gill?
Yes, um, good evening, everyone. So to answer your question, basically, uh, what we are charging for the communications um, individual that's doing the cable TV, he's basically charged in three hundred and fifty dollars an hour. And that would be for the city meetings itself. We, um, did the number based off of five meetings per month, not to include the two months that the council would be off and four hundred and fifty for the events. So that would not probably include the mayorial forum, but other events that, uh, the legislative side is also doing as well as the administration. And that would be maybe about a max, maybe two per month if needed.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Ms. Ward, and thank you, ma- Madam Mayor. I, so I was doing my, my math right here, and I, I see what you did. Um, was you did five meetings and I did times three meetings, so that's where I had, um. Okay, so that's fine, that's fine. Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Jones?
I'm sorry, okay, we're finished with that line item, um, still.
I do have one question on that line item, if you're going to move on.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Okay, so, I, I, I might have missed something. So if I, if it's three hundred and fifty dollars per meeting, times five, I did it times twelve to include even the months we're not going to be in there, that's twenty one thousand dollars. Um, and how? And then you have the, um, hundred thirty six thousand months, which gives you maybe, um, another, let's say, two thousand dollars, just around all the way up. And we'll be paying the forty one hundred per month, or is that only a special thing? Because it says forty one sixty per month for remote document translation, Spanish flyer materials. So that is for when we are sending out flyers to citizens, correct?
And that's flyers, that's announcements, that's, um, publications completely. And, um, that's all inclusive. So when we send out things, um, uh, for, like, for example, we did our survey, I wanted to send out one of the opera funds. That would have had to been part of that budget, sir.
And so that was, did you guys just do that by twelve, saying that you guys can do that each month? Because that's, that's fifty thousand dollars alone for that translation services. So I just, I, I, I just want to, again, just figure out how you came to the seventy nine thousand dollars.
Council President, Council President, so going back to your twenty one thousand for a second, I'm going to just tell you what the calculation that I did. So I did do the three hundred and fifty, I, I'm going to change it to, to the five meetings, um, per month. But I also, since it's three fifty per hour, I did three fifty times three. Let's say like, you know, so it's three fifty per hour. So that's three fifty times three times five meetings a month, and then multiply that by either ten or twelve.
Okay, so that will be different, but the note says it's three fifty per, per meeting.
No, I'm in agreement with you. That's why I'm saying like,
Okay.
My, that's why I was asking the question, like, how did we get to this number? Because I was doing like a whole bunch of different calculations.
Okay, I got you. Ms. Ferguson, is your comment on this line?
Yeah, I mean, when she was saying that, um, you know, for advertisement and things like that, some of that same things she said back over under the five thousand dollar, um, pocket of money, so, um, I'm just concerned that, that, you know, some of these, um, categories are being exaggerated. And, um, and it, it's not necessary to be, you know, this puffed up. And I'm, I'm still not satisfied with, with an increase of fifty four thousand dollars. You know, the last, the highest it's been is twenty five thousand. And so I, I'm, that's not satisfactory for me.
I'm sorry, were you finished, Ms. Ferguson? Okay, Mayor Cross?
Um, just wanted to keep in mind that this company, uh, that we're going with is different than we used in FY nineteen. Uh, previously when we had a lower number, that was a single proprietor. Um, so I just want to keep that in mind as well, that before we used, uh, a single proprietary, and now we're actually using, you know, a corporate, like a company to do um, the recordings and, and the professional services. There is a difference in cost for that.
Thank you, Mayor Cross. I, I, I just think that, um, and not to dispute what you're trying to do or nineteen versus twenty three, it was just for clarity, it'll be helpful if you guys had the, how you got to the increase. Um, how you got to seventy nine thousand eight hundred six dollars, because with overload of council meetings, I only got to twenty one thousand dollars just for council meetings alone. I didn't include the forty one hundred. I'm pretty sure it's going to go up with that. Um, but it'll be helpful if you guys can go back to the drawing table, uh, and calculate those things out. How many meetings, how many events do you think you're going to have, uh, a month? Because yours is, I think, uh, uh, city events, uh, is four hundred and fifty dollars, uh, per event. Um, uh, the broadcast service is fine, the annual service is fine, and then the, the forty one hundred dollars for the uh, translation services. Just got to have a better idea of how we're going to use that for the year and not just have a hugely inflated budget with no idea what, how we're going to, um, use it. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir. Council President, uh, Lady Ms. Ward wanted to, uh, return back for comment, if that's okay?
Oh, you're sure, Ms. Ward?
Uh, yes, so if I could just, uh, do a little breakdown that I have here. Uh, basically, it is three hundred and fifty dollars per meeting, which would be, as I stated, the five meetings per month at one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars for the entire month. That would be for ten months only. And then events, four hundred and fifty per event, which would be two events per month at nine hundred dollars. Totally up to twelve months, that would be ten thousand eight hundred dollars, and the city meetings would be seventeen thousand five hundred. So the number I got is thirty nine thousand one hundred for the year.
Okay.
And then the other ones would be the, um, the vendor that we're using for broadcasting, eight hundred and twenty. That would be for six months from January to June. Uh, because they did it on a different basis, so the number is slightly off, and we're doing that monthly, paying that monthly instead of yearly. Then we would use the additional platform that is six six hundred seventeen dollars and forty cent for the year. And then we have our email marketing service is a hundred and forty six dollars and ninety one cents for the year. The interpreter services, we broke it down by in-person, video and document. Um, we're doing it eight hours per month. And it has to be at a minimum of two, which would be at, it's, the way that I have it broken down, it's, the charge is sixty five dollars, but it'll be five hundred and twenty dollars a month for Spanish in-person. Sign language in-person, minimum of two would be a hundred and twenty five dollars for a total of a hundred, I'm sorry, one thousand dollars per month. And then we have the video, Spanish translation, minimum of two, a hundred and seventy five dollars, which would be one thousand four hundred a month. The sign language minimum of two is charging one hundred and twenty five dollars, which would be one thousand dollars per month. And document translations in Spanish, they charge sixty dollars per page. It was just based at four flyers per month, which we may not need, and it's at two hundred and fifty, I'm sorry, two hundred and forty dollars a month.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Ward. Uh, Treasure, uh, Stewart, it'll still be great to have that written down so we can see it. The only difference I have between uh what. Ms. Ward was talking about, and I calculated the first uh figures, uh, I didn't come up to thirty nine thousand, I only came up to twenty six thousand. But if you can, like I said, Ms. Stewart, just write that out for us and um have that in it for a note, I think that'd be great. All right, Ms. Jones, Councilwoman Jones?
I'm gonna go back to that same line item again, because um. The, number one, the resolution for Still Beach failed the other night, so I guess we're starting over. Uh, looking for someone. Uh, number two is, in in reading Still Beach's background information, that is a one-man operation. Mister Rick Gray, it doesn't sound like it's a corporate operation, but it's just something that. It it's it's his LLC, or his company. Uh, when you read it, uh, I didn't see where it was a a corporate organization where he had any any additional employees. Other than himself, which his background is 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 impeccable, but uh the cost is phenomenal. Uh, for, and and like I said in the email earlier to the council, um, I'm sorry, to the city manager. I think what needs to happen first is that a cable room needs to be assessed to to bring it up to and to uh to find out what a. Type of equipment that we need and and have it upgraded. That's the first thing that we need to do before we spend all of this money and trying to. Uh, yeah, so that we can bring the meetings back online, true. But uh, and all of the other additional advertising and all this other thing, first, we need to start with the basics, uh, step by step. Minor steps to figure out, you know, because the room has not been upgraded, and and the equipment has not been upgraded. We need to do that first and get all that in 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 place. Uh, so the person that we bring onboard can focus on getting just that done first, you know, the other is to me overwhelming. Also, when you, I I'm done, um, when you go down to line, telephone expenses, new cable telephone line. That's gone from ten thousand one forty eight to ten thousand five oh six to eleven thousand, ten thousand five, now we've gone to sixteen thousand dollars. So with the pay grant, uh, Mister Stewart probably can answer this question for me, pay grant support equipment. So for pay grant support equipment, twenty five thousand, we're gonna use the pay grant money for this. And I I actually thought that the pay grant could be used for anything in the cable uh room.
Yes, so the pay grant will be covering um those costs. We're looking at the pay grant dealing with that twenty five thousand. For the equipment. Upgrade of the broadcasting studio. Uh, let me see what else. Those two items, the seventy thousand and the twenty five thousand will be taken from the pay grant.
Okay, okay, that's, what the telephone expenses, where is that, that's gonna? How do we get to sixteen thousand dollar in telephone expenses? New cable telephone line. Yeah, purchasing, person, what, I mean. For that, I would like to see and ask somebody, uh, someone's estimate that came out and and said this is what this is gonna cost. Cable room security expense. You've gone from five hundred thou- thou- five hundred dollars to four thousand additional dollars, four thousand eighty three additional dollars. What kind of security are we? An alarm, an alarm system just for the cable room is gonna cost us four thousand five hundred and eighty three dollars.
And that too, the pay grant will be covering, but that doesn't mean that we're going to. Just be using the money openly. Ms. Ward has some. Breakdown as to how, uh, what she's gonna be spending those money on, especially for the security. Of the um, the equipment.
Okay.
But in all, the pay grant will be covering those costs.
It'll be covering the cost for the.
For the security.
Of, oh, for the security also?
Yes.
Okay, and for the interior maintenance and also for the uh support equipment?
Exactly.
Oh, and the communications, let's go back there, the communication to telephone expense. So is this some, these items that 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 are, have been done, you're saying that Ms. Ward went and got uh estimates or um. From persons, from vendors, as to, you know, what it is she's trying to develop in this room? To what it's gonna cost the city to upgrade it to this um level?
Yes, so what, what I'd ask her to do is, you know, assess what is needed. Approach at least three vendors. Identify the the number that will suit what we're doing. And um, I asked her to put a percent. Uh, I think it was like eight percent due to inflation. Um, so that's how she came up with these numbers.
Okay, so we do have itemized estimates from three different vendors as to that can justify these costs?
Yes, so we should have that.
Okay. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. I do have one more question as regards to, uh, does this cover also internet service?
The sixteen thousand is for telephone. There's a mass communication platform as well. And um, yes, some cable. Audio and video equipment, yes?
No, I'm saying, internet services doesn't include that, yeah, Wi-Fi, yeah.
They, and you're speaking about for the. For the uh, the municipality? No, that would be in general operations.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Um, okay, all right, any other questions or? That's here. Ms. Jones, uh, you're mute.
I'm sorry, I got too many papers around. Are we gonna stick with this seventy nine thousand dollar figure? Or we gonna look, wait, let them justify that?
Yeah, I was gonna wait for the justification, that's a good point, I didn't put notes in there.
Yeah, I'd like to see documentation of of some of that to to substantiate that figure.
Any other questions, concerns? And next up is the. Cable. Next up is the legislative office. Any questions or concerns related to the legislative budget? No? Okay.
It's looking, wait a minute.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Jones, Councilwoman Jones?
What is this, Maryland Municipal League, PG County?
What line is that? There it goes, thirty four.
I'm not sure that uh, M, uh, PG CMA, that's probably what that is, but it's. Is it seventy two hundred dollars?
It looks consistent with what was in prior years.
I didn't, I didn't think that was us. I didn't think that that was um. Singled out, I thought all of the com- okay, all right, membership and do, okay, all right. Go back, let me just see, membership and dues. For the clerk, okay, all right. I didn't know in PG CMA.
Councilwoman Ferguson?
Okay, so the National League of Cities, I don't, do any of us, uh, do membership for that, I know, um. Councilman, um. Williams used to do that, but. I don't know whether we actually do that. Uh, the other question I had on thirty nine, why we had youth summer program, you said move to general operations, wh- why did they move that from legislation?
I can answer that one. That moved to um, the uh HR department because of the stipulation, all of the criteria that Prince George's County was requiring. To do the summer youth program, there's so many uh questions and stuff that needed to be answered. And at that time, the council clerk uh said that that was overwhelming for her, so we moved it to HR since it was a a. Employment uh issue and something that the HR could handle.
Okay, the um.
Ms. Ms. Schultz, I'm sorry, did you have addition to that?
Yeah, yes, in addition to that, this year, and from what I understand, last year, you know, we didn't anticipate. The county is doing it totally different, the summer youth program. And that they are the ones, they're actually, applications went to them, they're making sure that the um students have all the orientation packages together before we receive them. I've been having monthly meetings with the county, actually, my last one was today, before the kickoff next week. And so the county is treating them totally different than than they had pre-COVID. And it's it's, it's nothing like it was when the prior council clerk.
Okay, thank you.
And to add to that, um, all departments are going to be benefiting from these um. These young people coming in. Um, so we consider it to be of a general operation. More than specific operations. So that's why this was moved from their different departments to the general operation.
Uh, just one question, all departments are not, the majority of the departments are participating. More so than just one or two, but not totally all. But enough to, to.
Can you go, uh, the training? Okay. Thirty one. So. You said thirty five hundred for both the uh, the clerk and the deputy?
Yes, do you not think that's enough or?
I would say, um. Put another five hundred on there. I think that it was, it it was that too, because we never really had a uh deputy before, so um, most of the time, I think, um. Let's tell, we use up that money. Ms. Jones, my friend, uh, help me out with that, but um.
Actual in nineteen was twenty one eighty nine, with twenty two hundred dollars for one person.
Right.
Yeah, I think it should be.
Um, I mean. I mean, two thousand was was would have been enough, or a hundred, but if you want five thousand. That would be for the two, so twenty five hundred you're saying per person. Okay.
Yes.
And then it's uh, five thousand. For the council. Per person. Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Now, wait a minute, okay, so the clerk, um. Membership dues, the clerk, uh, the dues is. A hundred. So that, so that probably should be two. I'm thinking, is that a hundred, fifty, fifty? Okay, so I see where you have the clerk, it's um, two fifty, and you put it's at five hundred, but nine twenty six. Um, it has a, a hundred dollars. In there, um. And that's for their clerk of their um, IIMC dues. So if that, if it's a hundred dollars for one, then it should be, that should be two hundred?
No, it looked like it was fifty dollars.
Fifty, fifty, and they doubled it to to a hundred.
Oh, okay, okay. I mean, but that's, is that two different, um, those are two do, two different, um, dues, or is it the same, clerk association and then IIMC dues? Are that two different, um, dues?
Council clerk, do you know? If there are, though, those are two dues, since I I think we've paid them.
Yeah, we did.
Say MML and IMC, yeah, those are two different dues, MML is fifty and um, IMC is um, one fifty, I believe.
One fifty?
I have to look in um, my check requisitions, give me one second to verify.
Okay.
Uh, then the hundred for that would be correct if it's for two.
But it looks like it's two, um, it's two different, it's a so, it's two different do, or is that one do, one? And then the second one is two fifty, you're saying?
Uh, yeah, I think so, two fifty for the uh, the MML dues. And fifty dollars for the IIMC dues, or I have those back as one or the other, but one is.
No, that, no, I'm not talking about, okay. I was just concerned, you know, make sure there was enough in there to cover up the dues. Okay, I I I'm done, yeah.
I I could um add to this to say through to April. Five fifty two was paid so far.
In dues?
No, this is for training.
What training?
For dues, let me see, dues. Oh, no, it is not broken down according to um. Dues is not broken down according to um, the clerk and the council itself, but. The total we have here is seven thousand.
Yeah, cuz it's in the same line.
Right, it's it's on the same line.
Okay, um, then go, scroll down, all the way down, what's left?
Everyone's starting.
Oh, stop. Okay. Discretionary. Okay, I think that went down during COVID time. Was it normally five hundred? Ms. Jones?
Yeah, it was normally five hundred, but we have been using our.
So it's the, it's just leave it like that at three hundred?
Yeah, I think I will leave it at three hundred, since the, you know, the, we're just now kind of walking out of the.
That's good.
Yeah, because we're just now walking out of the pandemic.
Okay, fine. Alright, I'm, I'm good.
Okay, Ms. Jones and Mayor Cross, I'll come to you in a second.
Telephone expenses, we, we haven't gotten a handle on that yet. I mean, each department is paying. Our telephone expenses have gone from twenty-five hundred to three thousand, no, you're going up too far. Telephone expenses, come down. Right here.
Okay.
Five fifty-eight. We've gone from twenty-five hundred to three thousand. So our telephone expenses by department is charged by the, the number of stations that we have on each desk, or? How, how is, what is this? I thought we were doing something to find out about. It says Verizon Wireless, so I mean, we don't have, all of the council doesn't have, doesn't have wireless phones. I'm, I'm not sure who has, sometimes the council president had a cell phone, but as far as the council, we don't, we don't have cell phones.
I think the clerk and.
I don't, yeah, the clerk and the council president, but is that three thousand?
I don't have, yeah, I don't have one.
So Mr. Stewart, can you find that, please?
So what happened here is that we have been work, trying to work to straighten out the Verizon bills, which include cell phones and the desk phone. This expense here is more in line with the desk phones and and I think there is a cell phone. I'm not sure if the council clerk has a phone, but this is more in line with that.
So for two desk stations and, and a cell, and, and a cell phone, we're paying three thousand dollars for the whole year?
We're looking at two hundred and fifty dollars per month.
And that's our entire Verizon bill, correct?
Yes.
Two hundred and fifty dollars.
Yes. So I am still in the process of clearing up what's happening with Verizon. It has taken a while because you know, each time I work on a specific area, then there's a call out to say, you know, we have to put those numbers on, but I'm still working on it.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Councilwoman Jones. Mayor Cross? I can't hear you on mute.
Well, thank you, sir. Thank you, Council President. I did have a question about the line item that currently doesn't have a budget line against it, awards. Now, I know that there is awards built into the executive budget because we started a new quarterly and annual awards recognition program for our administrative staff. Can we, can I get an explanation on that? And then the discretionary funds? Do we have kind of like any examples that we can put against that as to how these funds would be used? Thank you, sir.
I actually agree with the awards. Unless, yeah. Does that fall on the administrative side? Anybody opposed to taking that out? Council, I'm a council, yeah, Council and Jones.
Those award, that employee incentive and other awards, I think that was for when we had the, we were responsible for the summer youth and we had, we would do a end of year picnic or something like that. But now that we don't have that responsibility in the legislative office anymore, I, I have no issue with taking that awards out. As far as the discretionary fund, ordinance oh eight twenty-eleven will give you all of the information you need concerning the, and ordinance amending chapter twenty financial reports to rename chapter and adopt a discretionary fund policy. And that's ordinance oh eight twenty-eleven.
What are we taking out? I missed it, my phone had clicked out. What are we, what are we taking out?
The.
The awards, employee incentive and other awards, moving that to the administrative side.
I, I don't know if, what the other awards were for, but I mean, Mr. Harry.
I, I, I would think that it would be if there are any incentive awards that would be given to the clerk or the deputy in, as a result of a good performance.
Okay.
I mean, and I do, I do know that we did use some funds as Councilwoman Jones did stress about, I mean, to, to give a, I guess, luncheon or something for the, for the employees at the summer help. But I think that we, you know, we should have some funds in the, in the legislative department for, to award the employees if they, you know, if they want that.
But when you say employees, are you only referring to the clerk and deputy?
That's all the employees we have, we would have, under the, under the legislative department. I mean.
But do we need three thousand dollars for two?
And I was gonna say, we don't have, might not necessarily need three thousand dollars, but I mean, I'm thinking, you know, like.
One thousand. I mean.
That might, might be exceptional, I mean. Um.
What do y'all think?
I don't know, when I got my awards, I would give my three, seven hundred dollars. But anyway, I think that we should, I mean, that's, that's incentive, I mean, that being in the legislative department has nothing to do with administration. I mean, we, we could award our employee, for employees if they're warranted. So as far as the dollar amount, if you want to reduce it, but I think it should stay in there.
Okay. Is there a, a line item that should be, because there's nothing here? Ten dot, ten dot. Mr. Stewart, is there, is there a line item for this currently?
Let's check him.
Yeah, it was never, it wasn't in the twenty twenty-two either.
Oh, well, I did see that it was six thousand dollars were spent in nineteen, twenty-three hundred dollars spent in twenty. And we only had one.
But in nineteen, that, that was where Ms. Jones was talking about, where we had all this. Because we were responsible for our own summer help. At that time, like the show said, it's changed since then, so we would give a, you know, lunch and things like, and welcome. So that was a combination.
So this number would be seventy-eight thirty?
So do we, we want to make it fifteen hundred?
Three thousand?
Two thousand.
How much?
It can be two thousand, I mean, somebody can get five hundred, and if I can get, I mean, some, you know, a thousand or fifteen hundred, whatever, but I think two thousand.
Okay.
Please remember, this is awards and certificates.
Oh, as it certificates?
And awards.
Yeah, they're still the same, it doesn't, I don't think they'll change anything.
This is not cash, this is literally like a plaque, is that what, what you were saying?
In effect, that's, yes, in effect, that's what I'm saying. There may be, there may be some, there may be some, you know, some fair, you know, some party or something with giving that plaque, so that could be the cost.
Yeah, celebration. Because for me, that's high. If, if this is for, for us, when I say us, I mean, the, the clerk, deputy, deputy clerk, our employees, I, we have to. So I don't, I don't think we need to have all that money there, just.
No, I thought it was a cash awards.
Yeah.
Yeah, because in the past, they gave them gift cards and stuff, so that, maybe if we weren't supposed to be doing that, maybe they were doing something that wasn't supposed to be done. If he's saying it's supposed to be like a plaque or a certificate or just having a party to recognize them, but they, I think in the past, from what I remember, they gave gift cards, they gave money. So.
Ms. Schultz, I saw you on mute, so.
Sorry, I was just going to say, does council want to put anything in reserve to, to give certificate to those who help with your events? Like Glenn Arden Day, you have people outside of council working with you on that. You may want to recognize them as well, so you may want to think about that.
Because they do have some volunteers on the, on the Glenn Arden Committee now that are citizens.
So would that, so would that be, to that point, so I, I do agree that we should, oh, I, I'm a believer of recognizing folks, but would that fall under this category? Or would it fall under the general, and I, I don't have any attachment, I'm just literally asking. Or could that fall under the general event category?
Glenn Arden Day is a legislative event, so that would fall under Glenn Arden Day. Glenn Arden Day is a legislative event, so that would fall under us.
So, so the recognition part of it, the legislative, I'm sorry, the, the volunteer aspect of it, is that what we're saying, that we would want to spotlight the volunteers of people who help council? That's what we're saying, right? So it's not employees, it's not disemployees, and if, okay.
Okay.
That's the way I understand it.
So with that, do you just want to put, leave it at two thousand? Or one thousand?
Leave it at two.
Okay.
I agree.
Alright, there, there we go. Any other questions, edits for the legislative budget? Okay. I think that's it, all the notes are in there. Next up. Legislative, what's next? Finance office. Oh, skip code unfortunately. Finance office.
Council President, can you make the screen a little larger, please?
Yep.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Let's go to silver. Okay, I'm sorry, didn't see your hand, Ms. Councilwoman Jones.
I have a question for Mr. Stewart.
Yes, I'm on.
Okay. Are you going to do a reorganization of your staff, or are you going to necessarily have the same staff, staff identifications as assistant staff accountant and then staff accountant? Or are you planning on?
Yes, so I am definitely restructuring the staff. Yes, I am considering having an assistant staff accountant.
Okay, so that.
Instead, instead of having what was there before, a fiscal assistant, because I need to have cross-training with the staff accountant and the assistant.
Okay. Okay, so you've already changed the identification in this budget?
Yes.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Any other questions? So, I just had one. I'm sorry. Ms. Schultz?
Um, the Ms. Young's title when she left was assistant staff accountant. Mr. Bradon changed that back in nineteen before I got there. So the title that you see on line seventeen has been the title since two thousand, since June of two thousand nineteen. Ms. Jones, if that helps you.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Thank you.
Um, my, I'm sorry. Go to Ms. Gion first.
So, and this is no slight on, on our distinguished treasurer, but looking at the line item, and I know we discussed that we would, we would change his salary, so nothing against that at all, but looking at the way we're structured, and this is just me personally, the city, the treasurer reports to the city manager, if I'm not mistaken. And as we look at this, we see, I'm seeing the treasurer is getting paid. Unless we could, I think you briefly went back and that was what I was circling, it's a difference. And so I'm just.
The treasurer will make more.
Yeah, I'm just trying to see the rationale behind that.
Two different skill sets.
I understand that, I do, but I still also feel that if you're somebody supervisor, that's just me, if you're somebody supervisor, how are you getting paid less than the person you're supervising? That's, that's just me, that's one. And again, I, this is not to say that we should not adjust, substantially adjust, let me be, say that Mr. Stewart's salary. What I am saying, however, is when people are signing up to get these jobs, they kind of know what they're signing up for. And I do think, well, I do think that Glenn Arden pays low. At the same time, I just don't think, to me, that a supervisor should get paid less than the person that they're supervising. That's, that's just me. If they're part-time, like, it's not even, I think that was one of the things also in regards to us, you know, we're part-time folks, so we tech, we, we supervise technically up to the level that we can, and that's what we put the city manager here for, so they can be the person to man the ship. But I just don't, don't see how that number came to be what it is.
I always need more than my supervisor, that's why I wouldn't take his job.
Oh, see, you are that, that good old pension job.
Okay, if, Ms. Mayor Cross, you have a response?
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Council President. Now, the treasurer, the chief of police, and the city manager are on the equal plane and all should be working for the mayor. Um, so their pay salary shouldn't be bounced against what the city manager makes. Um, now, the administrative staff, um, from HR to you know, public works, to code enforcement is another question, cause really, that's your role under the chief of police. Um, so with that HR realignment, um, I don't believe that that should have an impact on where the treasurer's salary is. Um, so that was just my, my comment on that, sir, thank you.
And can I make a comment? Please remember too, that we have, um, consultant reviewing salaries. And we are more concerned about what the consultants will return to the city. These numbers that you're looking at as salaries, uh, they're not final. Um, we are still waiting for the consultants to provide more clarity. And Ms. Schultz, um, is the one that is in communication with them, so she could speak further on that behalf.
I received, I received this evening a draft salary information at six thirty-five that I'm, I'm going to share with Mr. Stewart, um, on Monday, and we can sit down and talk about what we, what we have received. By mutual, I mean, mutual solutions, municipal solutions. Basically, uh, indicated that they would get us by the end of this week, a draft of where we fall within the cities that we requested, and that they requested additional cities, because not everybody. Mentioned Dean, cause he didn't know this until just now. Um, I got that at six thirty-five, so we'll look at it, um, tomorrow and share Monday and share with everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. And just one correction, the the treasurer and the police chief do report to the, uh, city manager. They do, they do not report to the mayor. Um, uh, Ms., sorry, Councilwoman Free.
Yes, I just wanted to ask, um, Ms. Schultz, is the intention, Ms. Schultz and, um, Mr. Stewart, is the intention to incorporate the salary review into this current budget? Or, or are you expecting that any increases that they suggest would be reflected in next year's budget?
It's my, it's not my intention to, to incorporate in either one, that's council's choice. I just wanted I just wanted council to know that, um, we were trying to get it, so we have something to look at while we're looking at this year's budget, not that we're gonna necessarily incorporate, because it is reveling. But that, we wanted something into this process.
No, that's helpful. I was thrown by the comment that these are, that what we're looking at in the budget is not final. Um, it, it made it sound as though there was gonna be some other version of the budget that would reflect what was learned from, um, the consulting company, but I'm, I'm glad to hear that's not going to be the case. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other comments? I, I would, I would say that I, uh, respect the treasurer, do think that he deserves a, a raise, um. Ms. Jones, if I was your boss, I would try to apply for your position, if you made more than me, uh, supervisor. Um, I think he deserves a raise, not, you know, refuting that. I just don't agree that he should make more to the city manager. So, unless we're going to increase the city manager's, uh, pay. Uh, um, and we're well, I think we're at what, eighty-six right now? For the, the treasurer. I know it's not, uh, in here.
It's, it's eighty-six ninety-one. It is six thousand and ninety-one.
Okay. But I, I have my opinion, I think, Ms., uh, uh, Gion has made her point, and, and Ms. Jones has made her point. Any other council members wanna weigh in on this?
Um.
Yeah, uh, Ms., uh, Councilwoman, uh, Free, Councilwoman Ferguson.
I agree with, um, it was the, the fact that, um, the employees should not make more than the supervisor. Now, either we can lower this a bit, or increase her a bit, but, um, I don't agree with, 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 um, the treasurer. I mean, I know it's a different skill set, but it is what it is. I don't agree with, um, and making more than the, the, uh, city manager. But I do agree with, he needs, I mean, with the increase in the salary. Whatever that increase would be.
Councilman Harrison, Councilwoman Free, any thoughts?
I mean, I don't think someone should make more than their supervisor, but at the same time, it's not that significant of a difference, and generally, when you look at supervisor, employee relationships, it's, it's, um, it's a, a skill set that's comparable to one another. Um, so, you know, like for example, the staff accountant reports to the treasurer, right? So they would have similar s- skillsets, but the supervisor having more of those. But in the case of the treasurer reporting to the city manager, that's not the case. It's, you know, it's not like the city manager is expected to know how to do treasury. Um, so I kind of, I agree with Councilwoman Jones on the fact that it's a different skill set, um, and how it's organized, so I, I don't see a problem with the, the salaries as they are right now.
Councilman Harrison?
Um, I don't have a comment at the moment.
Okay. All right, so, um, okay, well, uh, certainly, three, two, so uh, we could leave it where it is right now, but, and come back to it, um. If we do leave it where it is, then I'll advocate for increasing the, um, city manager's salary. That's my opinion. Um, it can, we can agree to it or not. All right. Oh, actually, I have a comment here. All right. Any other questions, comments?
Uh, Council President, I do agree with you with raising the, um, city manager if we need to.
Okay, thank you, sir. Um, council, council clerk, uh, Mr. Stewart, um. I just wanna make sure you have adequate amount of funds in here, cause I see you have software maintenance and support accounting software. Uh, and when we talked, you, we did talk about, uh, um, upgrading the, um, the accounting software, because it's, the what you have now is antiquated.
Yes.
Are the implementation costs in here?
Yes, it is. That fifty-three thousand dollars. Um, they have quoted me, I think it was forty-eight thousand for the implementation of the new system. Um, the extra five thousand is just in case. Um, we stick with the, um, the MIP. And their fees are four thousand dollars, so just to have a cushion, just in case.
All right, thank you. Uh, and according to GAAP, you can capitalize some of those costs, but. Okay.
Yes.
All right. Any other questions or concerns before we move on? We'll go to, uh, I think it was the last one for tonight, since we started late, and we'll finish on this last one. Finance, executive office. And after that, we can wrap up and leave the rest for, um, another work session. Unless anybody wants to stop now. Okay, all right, executive office, last one of the night.
Wait, sorry, I didn't come off mute fast, no. Can we stop? I feel like the executive office is gonna be involve conversation.
I agree with Councilwoman Free. Uh, it's been a long night.
Unless we do another one.
Two more, and we gotta quorum. Councilwoman Ferguson? Stop. Oh, okay, anybody wanna keep on going? That's three, that says stop, but anybody.
I'm, I say, why not this? What'd he say?
He said, why not? Let's move full steam ahead. Uh, no, okay, all right, so with that, we will stop here. Uh, council clerk, please make note that we stopped after the finance budget. So, next up, uh, it's the work, well, no, our next work session will be, um, we'll start with the executive budget, which will be from the citizens packet, page twenty-six. All right, with that, just before we get off, just wanted to do some housekeeping, uh, since I have at least six members on, on the books. Um, availability for next, for two things, uh, interviews next week and, um, another work session. And so let me stop sharing for our social confidential information. All right, so this is twenty-third. Uh, I figure maybe next Thursday, we can convene again for a, a work session. Anybody not available? Yes. Anybody not available on Thursday, uh, June thirtieth? At, and we can start, we can start earlier, we start at six thirty, if you would like. Six thirty, anybody not available, six thirty?
Um, I think you asked us to reserve six and six-thirty for interviews, so it might, it would need to be after that.
Yeah, but if we could get that done on Tuesday, Wednesday, I, I think I've read yours and Ms. Jones that Ms. Jones is available, any one of those days, you're available Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. So I'll move, if, if everybody's available on Thursday, then I'll move the, um, interviews to either, uh, Tuesday or Wednesday.
I'm available Wednesday and Thursday.
Okay. Uh, Mr., uh, Councilman Harrison, are you available Wednesday, Thursday?
Yeah, I'm available either day, it doesn't matter.
Okay, so I'm gonna book both days. Wednesday could be the interviews and Thursday could be the work session for the budget.
Okay.
What time for the interviews?
Let's say let's start early. Um, we have two people for the, um, deputy clerk and the attorney, so it's three total. So if we can start at six, hopefully be done, and then, like, Ms. Ferguson, I see you shaking your head. Are you not available?
I am, and it was something.
Okay. All right, thank you. So Wednesday, we'll have the interviews, Thursday, we'll have the work session. Am I missing anything else?
The time is the what session? Seven?
Um, six thirty, so we start a little bit earlier, don't get out so late.
And okay, and the interview is a
Interviews start at six.
Okay.
Okay, uh, council clerk, do you have that? Okay, let me just make a Uh, and then we'll also, I I do think we need to address the, the, um, the, uh, gold room, new gold room rules, uh, regulations that, uh, Ms. Robinson provided. Um, I know there's a lengthy packet, but I'm guessing we can probably move that into the next week. To give people more time to review it. Okay. So I, but if we can get through all this stuff, then we'll be able to go, uh, recess. Um, Mayor Cross?
Thank you, Council President. Uh, respecting the council's time. Uh, there are nine additional sessions noting that the council intentions of recessing in July. Uh, would it please the council to go through some of the less lengthier ones, like the veterans memorials, literally one line? Uh, you know, uh, like maybe code enforcement. The only addition there is the purchasing of the cars, everything else is pretty much standard. Are those things that we can maybe power through tonight, so that you don't have nine items to review on your next session? Amidst the other things you're trying to do?
Um.
I don't mind. Council President, I don't mind that, quite honestly, so, but I, I will go with the will of the majority, but if it's, those departments are smaller, so.
I'm sorry, uh, thank you, Councilwoman Gil. I've heard somebody else, I don't recall who it was. Was it you, Michelle?
Uh, yes, but as the budget has been done in the past, yeah, we're going on recess. But still, because the budget was received late and we got started late, we, we, we just can't rush through this and do this, because uh, I, I understand, we're all tired. We did have a meeting before this. If we just do the budget items themselves, yes, we have budget items to go through. As a prior council president, we did the budget in sections, and we did the, 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 uh, smaller ones, yes, and got them over with. But we've already had a meeting, but prior to this meeting, which prolonged, and, and, uh, some of us that were on the prior meeting have, uh, now, we're ready to call it quits, but, uh, if you get four people to say, you know, you wanna continue, then that's fine.
Anybody want to change their vote to continue? I, I will just add that, um, a few things. One, even though we're going to recess, we're still going to be meeting to pass the budget. So it's, it's not like we're going to, uh, at July first, not come back to, to budget into September. Uh, we're going to continue to hash this thing out until we pass the budget. Um, two, we did get this budget rather late, we followed the proper protocol, um, and, you know, yeah, it, it would put, uh, unfair, uh, pressure on us to speed through it, but we got it at such a late time. Uh, and three, um, according to the charter, uh, the FY twenty-two budget is now in effect for FY twenty-three. Uh, according to the charter, you're correct, wrong, uh, if a budget is not passed by the second Monday in June, then the FY twenty-two budget or the current fiscal year budget automatically rolls over to, uh, the next fiscal year. So FY twenty-two is currently now in effect for FY twenty-three until the council passes um, the the proposed and amended FY twenty-three budget. So, you know, we are fine from funding um, for FY twenty-three, um, perspective, so. With that said, are there any other final comments? Before we adjourn?
Wait, I'm sorry, are we adjourning or are we continuing on with the smaller sections? I thought we were just continuing on with the smaller sections. No?
Yeah, I didn't have four people to change. I have four people to adjourn, but I don't have four people to move forward.
Oh, I said it was fine with me, and I thought somebody else said that, never mind. Whatever we could, whatever you wanna do, Council President.
It, it doesn't, it doesn't matter to me, I'm fine with it all, we can, we can go to bed.
Alright, let's just adjourn, we could, uh, meet next week, review the budget, um, and since there are short ones, then we'll breeze through them next week. So it's not like we're gonna spend an hour on the smaller ones next week, if it's small, we'll breeze through them, so we should be fine. Alright, with that, it, the time is nine fifty, and this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.
Bye.
Goodnight.